I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with local.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
There.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Stout.
Here, thank you.
We have one item for the work session this evening. The Springfield pavement management report. Please tell me it's got a cool acronym. The SPMR? The SMR? I got nothing.
Good evening, Mayor Van Gordon, council members and everybody else in attendance. Today, we're here to present an exciting step forward in how we manage.
Hey.
Maintain.
Chris.
Collect. Yes.
Second, you're going to have to give us some instructions here. I know you're going to dive into a presentation. If you want to go through the whole thing first and we hold these guys back with the questions. Or do you want them fired at you?
I'm just going to issue an opening statement.
Oh.
We're going to have a presentation by our vendor and then they can fire away.
Don't ask Megan. She's got a prequel of the presentation. Go ahead, Chris.
All right. Welcome. Today, we're here to present an exciting step forward in how we manage, maintain, collect Springfield's street management infrastructure data. As you know, maintaining the city's streets is a crucial step to ensuring safe and efficient transportation for our residents. In the past, we've relied on city staff to visually inspect streets and assess pavement conditions. While this approach provided valuable data was time consuming, labor intensive, and diverted staff from other essential projects. To address these challenges, we've partnered with Infrastructure Management Services, IMS. To collect data that will be instrumental in implementing a more efficient data-driven approach for pavement assessment. In August of this last summer, IMS utilized their state-of-the-art integrated road information system, Iris Pro. There you go, there's your acronym. To capture continuous high-resolution pavement management images, assessing key conditions like cracking, rutting, roughness across 203 centerline miles. Additionally, IMS deployed its fast falling weight deflectometer to evaluate the structural integrity of our material and collector roadways. This collaboration not only alleviates pressure on our staff, but also provides an unbiased, comprehensive analysis of our streets' current conditions. By leveraging this data, we aim to establish a baseline for future street preservation and rehabilitation efforts. This will enable us to prioritize and plan more effectively, enhancing the quality and longevity of Springfield's street infrastructure while saving costs in the long run. I'm now pleased to announce Megan Ratliff from Infrastructure Management Services, who will provide a more detailed. Will provide more detailed insights into the methodologies behind the pavement assessment and how this partnership will benefit the city. So Megan, I turn it to you.
Thank you so much. Can everyone hear me all right? Awesome. And so should I share my screen here or is it kind of pulled up for you guys to see already? Just before I start sharing.
Confirm instructions if we're driving or she is. You're driving.
Okay, so. I believe I am sharing.
Well, you can see it.
Okay. So can you see my mouse possibly as well? Just want to confirm it's the right screen.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So apologies, just want to make sure we get that out of the way. So thank you for the introduction. I am Megan Ratliff. I'm a pavement engineer at ICC IMS. So basically, I'm here today to talk to you about our joint project with Springfield. Which basically was to go through the pavement management process and update you guys' pavement conditions and generate a pavement management plan that'll help you in the future. So let's get into it. First, I just kind of want to talk about some of the agenda items for this presentation. So I'll first talk about the pavement management process and what this means. And then I'll go into the pavement condition survey that we actually performed. And then I'll get into some representative conditions in Springfield. And then I'll talk about the overview of what these conditions are. And then finally, we'll get into the analysis of this data and actual project plan and planning efforts that were done. So with that, I'll get into the pavement management process. So I'd kind of like to explain this, you know, you guys have certain objectives as a city and agency, different policies. And this varies as, you know, we go across the country, we deal with different agencies all over, different budgets we encounter. So we like to customize our approach to these different objectives. And then we deploy our equipment, we assess those pavement conditions in your network. And then we provide you with that data. And then we actually do the analysis on that data that gives you a plan to approach some of those objectives, some of those goals that you may have. And then you guys implement them and you actually, you know, integrate them into your workflows. You make sure that you incorporate them into your day-to-day activities. And then we repeat this process every couple of years. So this is what I like to call the pavement management process. And generally speaking, this is what all agencies do in some form or fashion. And just to get into the actual driving mechanisms behind some of the pavement management approaches. So essentially, pavement management, it depends on quantifying the pavement management, the pavement scores. So basically, payment condition index, it's a way that we quantify the payment conditions for all networks. So the scores go from zero to 100 with 100 being as good as possible, so excellent. And typically, pavements deteriorate according to this curve that you see here on the right. So you see here, it's shallower at the top and then it drops down really steeply. So basically, what that means is it stays really good for a long time and then it drops suddenly. And that happens because of the traffic that it sees, the environment of the surrounding area, for whatever reason. But typically, it is cheaper to preserve the pavement life for as long as possible than it is to try to rehabilitate it after it deteriorates significantly. So it is cheaper to try to extend the life than it is to try to fix it at the end of its life, if that makes sense. So this just kind of shows that process. So typically, it's better, like I said, to try to keep it in good condition for as long as possible. So you see here, it kind of dips down and then you may maybe do some preservation treatment to make it increase in condition a little bit more. And then it deteriorates after a while and then you do the same thing. Whereas if you had let it deteriorate, it maybe got to a really poor state. And that means that all you could do was reconstruct it essentially. So this is kind of the idea where we call it cost of deferral to try to, you know, treat things in a good state so that it lasts longer essentially. So now I'll get into our actual payment condition survey that we performed. So this is our Iris Pro pave ban. It's that cool acronym that was mentioned at the beginning. This is essentially just a very high-tech piece of equipment with lasers on the back that allows us to identify all distresses on pavement surfaces. So just some of these distresses include alligator cracking, rutting, longitudinal and transverse cracking, block cracking, all of these different things. A lot of people may not be familiar with the exact type of each of these cracking, but it does matter in terms of quantifying that score that I mentioned, the zero to 100. So basically, we drove all the roads in Springfield's network and we quantified all of these types of distresses for each roadway. And you can see some examples of how we're able to get that. And this is just some quick screenshots. But I like to call attention to the cracking over here. So we can see all of the cracks on the surface because of our laser outfitted equipment. And we're able to see how wide and how deep the cracks are. And this does matter for, like I said, in terms of quantifying that score. So just to kind of give you an idea of how we're able to do that. So like I said, you know, we get this score zero to 100. And we are able to incorporate those distresses, like I mentioned, on the surface, but also how rough the pavement is. So with those two quantities, we're able to come up with a very comprehensive score for the surface of the pavement. That gives us a very good indication of how well it's doing, how well it's performing. And another piece of this project was our following falling weight deflectometer equipment. And this is actually one of the best ways that you're able to tell how structurally healthy the roadways are. Because everything I've mentioned so far, the cracking on the surface, the rutting on the surface, and then the roughness, all of that is everything, exactly like I said, on the surface. So this with the falling weight deflectometer allows us to see how healthy it is underneath the surface. And this actually plays a very big role in terms of what types of rehabs we are recommending for each segment. And essentially, what kind of plan we're generating for the roadway network. So this is something that was done for this project and it's just a very good indicator of that structural health. So we take all of those things that I've mentioned so far, the surface condition, the roughness and the structural index. And we're able to calculate that score from zero to 100. And I just like to call out anything below a 40 is considered poor or very poor. So just to kind of give some context. And now I'll kind of go through some images from the Springfield network that kind of give you an idea of where these pavements fall in the categories from zero to 100. So first, very poor. So this one, you can see it's riddled with alligator cracking. And just so you know, this is a very load-associated distress, like we call it in pavement management. That just means the cracking goes all the way to the bottom, which means essentially the pavement is completely failed. So all that can be done for this roadway is rip it up and replace it with a new one. So this score is a PCI of three out of 100, so very low. And then we get into the poor category. You can see it's much less of that cracking, but there is still a significant amount along the surface in the center here. So this score is about a 33. So this just lets you know, it does have a lot of that cracking, so it is still going through to the bottom of the pavement. And then here, we see a marginal pavement, the score is a 46. There's less of that cracking, but it is still prevalent. And maybe it doesn't go the full length of the roadway, but it is found in some places. And then as we get into the fair category, we're seeing essentially none of that alligator cracking I was talking about. You can see there's just kind of longitudinal and transverse, maybe block cracking. This just suggests that it's mainly due to the environment, not necessarily due to the traffic loads. So this is a PCI of 56 to kind of get you in that mindset. And then here in the good, you'll notice there is still some cracking, but it's not as significant, not as pronounced. So this is a PCI of 67. And then again, as we get into very good, much less of this cracking, it's very hard to tell in some places. So it's really just longitudinal and transverse. So PCI of 75. And then here at excellent, there's essentially none of the cracking. There may be a few cracks here and there along the segment, but overall, there's not really any to be noted. And this is a PCI of 98. So now I just kind of like to get into summarizing that data and talking about the pavement conditions as a whole. So after we drove all the roadways and calculated the PCI for each roadway segment, we were able to come up with, like I said, just summary charts and graphs of this information. And you can see here, the average PCI for Springfield's network is a 69. And then the backlog or the PCI percentage below 40 is about 10.8%. And to give some context, this is really pretty much on par with what we as a company see across the country. It's not a published number anywhere, but I can tell you in our experience, this is pretty typical for agencies of your size that we see across the country. So you can see here that trend we're seeing, it's good. Obviously, we don't like to see a lot in the backlog categories. So this just shows, you know, whatever you guys are doing is, you know, good for this moment. And then sometimes we also do like to summarize this by the different functional classes that you guys have. And this is basically the types of roads. Just for example, you see locals and then you get into the collectors and then arterials. So those arterials are the most important roadways, meaning they service the most traffic, the highest traffic volumes. And this just basically shows me, you know, there's a really good distribution amongst the functional classes. There's nothing to be noted as maybe being undersurfaced or oversurfaced. The minor arterials are a little bit better at a 679 because, like I said, those are a little bit more important, generally speaking. But one thing to note is the locals make up a very large portion of the network. So the locals should not be forgotten by any means. And then another deliverable that was delivered for this project was this proprietary web application that we came up with. It's called Inform and it basically allows Springfield to see all of the imagery that we collected and the data that we calculated for it. So now I'd like to get into the analysis of the data we've collected and some of the project planning. So up until this point, everything I've showed you has been current conditions, if you will. Now I'd like to show what the projections look like about 10 years into the future. So like I said, we did a 10-year analysis and you can see here some different budget scenarios. And I'd like to point out at this point that essentially, everything for this analysis is estimated. So, you know, Springfield's budget is an estimate at $2.5 million per year. The unit rates that we have associated with some of the activities were estimated and inflation was estimated. But with all of the working knowledge we have, we were able to come up with budget scenarios and scenarios that show how much it is going to cost to achieve a certain goal. So the way that this graph can be read is you've got a PCI along the Y-axis and you've got a budget along the X-axis. So if you want to target a certain PCI, maybe 70, you can go over and down and that is about what we are projecting it would cost. So. With this, you can see it would cost about $4.22 million to keep the budget or to keep the PCI at the same level past 10 years. And then I also like to show this graph because it's, was there a comment?
Yeah, I had a question about the previous graph. When you talked about our budget, did it include the street bond that was passed last year? Or is that just our road fund? And Ben's tagging in here.
Yeah, that did not include the bond package and that number was really just kind of thrown our board. For example, the operations maintenance side of the budget is 1.82 million. So this is just trying to get us into a position to understand what we're looking at on the graphs.
Okay. So in potentially in the future, right? You guys could answer the question when you include the bond package, what kind of road condition, average road condition level should we be roughly at at the end of the bond lifecycle?
Correct. And because of the bond packages, we would be able to show over the past six to eight years an improvement in the surface condition.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There's more questions. I'll just kind of show this graph. This is one of my favorite graphs to show because it shows PCI on the Y-axis and then the years along the X. And it is the best graph to show, okay, you know, how is our budget doing over 10 years? And what does a certain budget look like over 10 years? So you can really see the implications of changing a budget over those 10 years. So you can see with this brown, you can see what a target PCI goal would look like in terms of budget. It really just shows the implications of changing that number essentially. So clearly, you know, it takes money to keep conditions the same or improve them. And that's, you know, that's something that every agency understands. It's just kind of finding those funds to accomplish it. But I think, you know, getting this plan in motion, making decisions based on data is definitely a step in the right direction. So with that, that was pretty much all I had and I'm welcome to questions and I'll be happy to try to answer them or direct it to somebody who can for sure.
Any questions? Michelle.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One, just to make sure I understand what local means. Is that residential streets like my neighborhood streets?
Yes, yes, it's definitely meant to cover the residential streets. But, you know, sometimes different roads are classified for different reasons. So I'd have to defer if maybe possibly that is not what is intended. Is someone raising their hand?
Yes, in this case, local is your residential streets.
Okay. So then, so my neighborhood, several of the streets in my neighborhood received slurry seal, like full slurry seal coverings. Does the, the process that you went through to determine the level of cracking and all of that is, does that go underneath those slurry seals? Can we see what's underneath there? With that, with that technology?
Not with their technology, only if the cracks have reflected up through the story.
Okay. Thank you.
You were waiting for me to add something, weren't you?
Oh, wow. It was road condition. I knew you were going to have at least five questions about it.
Yeah, thank you. First off, thank you for this report. It was very, very helpful and I'm really glad that you utilized that type of technology to be able to get an accurate view of what we need to do with our roads. As it's kind of been mentioned, it's kind of my thing to make sure that we have good infrastructure. And so is it possible, I had mentioned to Neil earlier, is it possible to get a list of, like a detailed list, a sheet that breaks it down by street classifications? So we could kind of see what streets, I mean, I'm assuming there were quite a few, it was 200 miles. So could we get something or could I get something that shows the street classifications and the breakdown of what streets those were?
Yeah, absolutely. I didn't want to inundate you guys with a 132-page document to scroll through, but.
What?
We can absolutely provide all of the document. I mean, yeah. Or we can break out the report to just show you how locals are classified, if that's what you're interested in.
Sure. And then is there any consideration based on the condition of the roads for when you would decide which ones to fix? So.
Yes. So part of this, and Megan didn't really speak on it, but there was a deliver, like an analytical model that was delivered that allows us to project one, two, five, 10 years out based off of conditions. Bond packages that we could input to determine how much money we have to spend in any given year and what we can do with those dollars. And based off the current condition of the street, the model will tell us here is our projection of what we should, what treatment we should be providing to these streets.
Okay. Because one of my biggest concerns is that when those roads have reached that, that stage of there's just not anything we can do, we're just going to have to completely replace it. So I worry that those streets are kind of going to get put to the side because they're going to cost so much to repair, right? And I don't want us to forget that because there are folks living on roads that are just really crappy. And, and they may not be an arterial or collector street, what have you, but they're, you know, those are neighborhoods. Those are people's streets and they're having to drive in and out of those all the time. And it does make a difference on the cost and the value of people's homes and that kind of thing. So I know we didn't with this bond, but I really with a $20 million bond, it would have been nice to see like $5 million of that set aside to like actually go into some of these local streets. Because I think if we want to, we want to get people to get behind us in supporting infrastructure repair and maintenance. We need to show them that we're not just looking at those main roads, that we care about their, their side streets and their, the roads that their kids are trying to play on and stuff like that. So that's all I had. Thank you.
If I may, to your point on. Selecting roads based off of this technology, we have, we have been doing just that, selecting streets by the road condition. We just have not had this technology before. We've been using staff in the field and this took the place of that. And then as far as local roads, what we have been doing the past few years is treating them with slurry seals, like Councillor Weber mentioned. Last year, unfortunately, we forego because of the ice storm. We've been working with Lane County to manage those projects for us and so they did the same. But we will be back in residential roads this year again with Slurry Project. I wanted to mention one item as far as testing that was done, the falling weight deflectometer. That was only done on collectors and arterial roads. We did not put that into the residential roads.
Well, I also think that it's important that people don't feel like their road could have been, or their neighborhood is being singled out, that they're not important, right? They could, this technology says, it's sort of like levels the playing field is all I'm saying. It takes out that, you know, I know, I don't believe that you would ever do that. I don't think that that's, but I think then in people's perception, they could say, you know, I live in a lower, you know, whatever neighborhood and therefore they're ignoring me because of that. And this way they're able to say, no, we really looked at the roads and the condition that they were in based on this technological stuff. So I think that's really great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think this is outside the scope of this, but I just wanted to chat about it a little bit. And in a couple of the photos, particularly the very poor and the poor, in addition to the road situation, these are roads that don't have sidewalks. They are not, you know, so it's just, for me, I'm thinking, and that probably that's not included in the price, right? We're just talking, I'm seeing lots of nothing. So we're just talking about this is what it would cost to pave it. But I think that when we talk about the bond measures, we also talk about like, how do we use those projects as an opportunity to just improve the overall walkability and livability and accessibility of the neighborhood? So I know it's not part of this, but I'm imagining, and I'm going to say it out loud, that as we are using data to drive this, that that would also be important to me. Is like, if we're going to be looking at how we, we improve these neighborhoods to just do it all. And I know that we try to do that, that when we do roads, we also try to improve that. But just, I don't know where we're capturing that sort of data and want us to think about it. Thank you.
And Megan might be able to answer, speak more to that, but the model is really flexible where we could determine unimproved roads have a 10x or, I don't know what the number is, but budgetary item to repair compared to an improved roads in the same condition. The way they've structured their model, it's really flexible, so we can input that information as we need.
Beth.
And just to clarify, the poor and the very poor, I think it was if they hit 40 or under, are those both full reconstruction? Poor and very poor would be full reconstruction.
Yeah, that's correct.
Alan.
Was there any consideration, first of all, it's a cool report, but is there any consideration of maybe roads that we're just, maybe we want to let go? And I know that sounds a little counterintuitive, but thinking of, you know, a road that's in a relatively remote area, it's not currently built up. Or maybe there's like one property that uses it and it's a commercial use or something, but it's not, it's barely used. Is there consideration given to, hey, here's a handful of roads that maybe we shouldn't be maintaining or we should allow to go to gravel and just be gravel? Because a gravel road is going to last a whole lot longer than a paved road. And I'm almost wondering if we're asking the question of, maybe there's some roads in our town that we should allow to go to gravel simply because the overall cost. I realize it might be an unpopular question, but simply because the cost to maintain that is completely not supported by the revenues coming in to support that. So I'm just curious, is there any conversation about, hey, here's the roads we might let go to gravel?
So we have not considered that. However, we have thought about the idea and talked about it as recently as a few years ago. You might be familiar with streets 31st, 33rd between industrial and Olympic. We did an overlay on those streets a few years ago because they were so bad and these are unimproved roads, but they're bomb cratered. And so we paved those because it was actually cheaper in the long run to do that than fill potholes, you know, $5,000 a year maybe. And so very time intensive, you know, taking a road back to gravel has its own disadvantages because then we have to grade that road. You would want to probably put some type of oil manure just to hold it together because it's going to be just as bad as an improved road with potholes because we still have to maintain that. So by doing what we did on overlaying them, we've got several streets out there that, you know, 20 years ago, I was part of the team paving them and they're still holding up, so. Yeah, thank you.
And I was wanting to add just. And I was wanting to add just one thing. Um, we provided essentially a pavement management plan. Um, but it is completely up to you all, you know, how much you want to adhere to it, right? So it's, it, we've provided the recommended treatments and the recommended timing of said treatments, but ultimately it depends, you know, how, what funds are available, um, what roads truly get priority, because you know, it, it, it always, we always need to be sensitive to complaints or maybe those issues that arise where maybe we should let this one just deteriorate to gravel it. The plan that we have provided is very um, flexible, as it's been said, just to those things. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
All right, Nancy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I would just wanted to acknowledge the work of our staff to uh, bring this technology to the city. This was one of the first questions I had when I started as city manager is what is the pavement condition index? It's one of those really wonky metrics that you look at when you're looking at a, a city and it kind of talks about the quality of life of a city and, and I even remember I was a huge lover of economics, even from high school, learning in high school that road surface and infrastructure is so critical to act, to uh, the economy. So I just wanted to give praise to our operations team and everybody that are out there um, maintaining our roads, building out our roads. I actually went, saw the road crew do, uh, then that was your idea to uh, pave the, the 31st and 33rd. And they really do have a heart for what they do and doing it as um, as prudently as possible and um, it's just really amazing. I encourage any of you uh, when the weather gets better uh, to go out there and, and watch them do their work. Thanks.
All right, thanks for the report. Um, I, a couple of questions that I had was, did we, did we uh, look at anything in, in Glenwood that would be potentially outside the city limits, but in those areas that we're expecting to start annex, uh, annexing?
Um, I don't know. I think we just focus on city-owned streets. So if they're not currently owned by the city, then we probably did not analyze them.
Oh, I'm, I'm seeing Brian in the back.
So we have, uh, we do not spend, let's go, it's on. We do not, we have not done capital projects on unimproved roadways. So it gets at what Councilor Rodley was speaking to in uh, terms of updating things for pedestrian and bicycle. Um, Ben Staff uh, select those and they've gone through a really neat demographics exercise to actually reach out to some of those unimproved roadways where um, people have experienced less service. Um, and so that has been sort of the target of the project. So I, I think the difference is, is where does the money come from? And a bond project has not supported uh, any project of its type on an unimproved roadway. And I'm not sure you can do that because it's considered maintenance.
Yeah, well, that, that's the million, I think that's the million dollar question. And what I've seen in the uh, what I, what I saw in the presentation is the need for us to have a longer conversation about our residential roads. I know that we're all like, you know, half the council was up at Salem talking about transportation funding. And I think the time's getting close when we really need to get to a strategy about how we're gonna deal with some of these roads. The other place that I just wanted to note, you know, I think uh, if we, even if we just had found $10 million to work on our residential roads, those could be life-changing for folks. And that the, especially around the middle part of the city, right? Like, you know, right, right through, you know, the end of Ward three, Ward four, early part of Road Ward five, there's just a lot of residential roads out there that need, need some time and need some attention. The one I, I guess request for more information that I had out of this was we did have, I know that that 2018 bond made an impact, made a significant impact to us. It would be nice to get kind of a uh, either a one pager, a well-written uh, note back that just explains that, hey, we saw the improvement, you know, in the ro- i- in our uh, index score from X to Y be specifically because of the bond measure. That would be something that would be nice to be able, be able to share with, continue to share with the public. Because frankly, we're gonna be asking for road bonds for a long time at this rate. And you know, the council is always talking about the importance of maintaining these roads and just more information to help us. Um, I don't know, build the interest, understanding, continue to share with the public as we, we're, we're on this mission to repair our infrastructure would be helpful.
I really hope to see us back in front of the council on this subject matter. And one of the things, I really appreciate Nancy calling out uh, her appreciation that we now have a pavement index. Chris is actually uh, someone who's um, built, helped the operations division build field tools. And so we're collecting data and what this is gonna allow, working with IMS, is to analyze data and we'll use it for decision criteria, so.
Going into the project, I think one of the best calls we made was publishing this on social media so that people understood where all these vehicles and these sensors, what they were doing. I got a lot of positive feedbacks from that. All right, any other questions? I think we're good.
Mayor, council members, members, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Nancy, you're gonna have to remind me, were we talking about the retreat here? Or were, were we talking about it in the regular session? I didn't see it on the agenda, so I didn't know if you had it pulled.
Mayor, I was going to address that during um, business from the city manager in the regular session.
Well, then I will have given everybody a prequel to look forward to talking about Saturday. All right, that's the only item we have. I'm going to adjourn us until seven o'clock.
Okay, Springfield City Council, regular session to order with local.
Mayor Lynn Gordon.
Here.
Council Weber.
Here.
Council Mo.
Here.
Council Rodley.
Here.
Council Blackwell.
Here.
Council Doyle.
Here.
And Council Stapp.
Here, thank you.
All right, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
There are two, there are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings in business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the front of the council chambers and turn them into the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, computer, or computer and wish to speak either of those times, please use your raised hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers and anyone who has raised their virtual hand. First item, please.
First item is Springfield upbeat the 2024, 2025 Springfield Public Library Bookmark Contest winners. Abigail Craig and Emily David should be here for this item.
Come on, you gotta come introduce the whole thing. We've done all the formal stuff now that we can get to the fun things.
Good evening, council and mayor. Um, I'm pleased to be here. For the record, my name is Abigail Craig. I'm the Youth Services Librarian at the Springfield Public Library. And I'm here to celebrate the 18 winners of this year's Springfield Public Library Bookmark Contest. It's our 44th annual contest. And we had uh, more than the, the, the upbeat said, we had over 1,400 students K through 12 who entered this year. So these are, will it go up? Technical difficulties.
Completely handled.
And this year's theme is the theme of books, reading, libraries, or they could do a submission related to the summer reading theme for this year, which will, or for this coming summer, which is uh, Level Up at Your Library, about games and gaming. Um, and all of the bookmarks have been printed and will be available in the library courtesy of um, help from the Springfield Arts Commission and we'll have a big display of all of the entries during the month of March with an I Spy game in the hall as well. So we're really pleased to invite them up to um, hopefully give a high five to the mayor.
Take a picture and I will be right, and I will be right down. We're so excited to have you. Do you know, we already handed out the bookmark winners to all. It's one of the perks of being council.
We told them you got a stack of your own. Okay. Stand over here for a second. Is it open? Okay. I'd like to invite up Olivia Thomas, who's in kindergarten from Elizabeth Page Elementary. And Jocelyn Thomas, who's a first grader from Guiley Elementary. And she can come all the way down here if you want. Come to the end, come to the end, Olivia. We also have Casey Carr, a first grader from Walterville Elementary. Oliver Kling, a second grader from Two Rivers Dos Rios Elementary. Jesus Flores Ortiz, a second grader from Two Rivers Dos Rios Elementary. Bring your bookmark. You can get your bookmark, Jesus, if you want to bring your bookmark up. Um, Rowan, Rowan Robinson, a third grader from Maple Elementary. Sage Barr, a third grader from Walterville Elementary. Julian Maxwell Garcia, a third grader from Yolanda Elementary. Eliza Culkin, a fourth grader from Douglas Gardens Elementary. Kalen Cole, a fourth grader from Centennial Elementary. Georgia Brewer, a fourth grader from Douglas Gardens Elementary. Thomas Haberstah, a fifth grader from Teach Northwest. Jessica Ward, a fifth grader from Thurston Elementary. Camille Black Williams, a fifth grader from Ridgeview Elementary. Noah Savalich, a sixth grader from Eugene Christian School. Jade Assumendi from, a sixth grader from Briggs Middle School. River Davidson, a seventh grader from Briggs Middle School. And we have one person who is not here, but I will hold their bookmark. Maxwell Britton, a 12th grader from Springfield High School. Thank you.
Follow instructions here.
So the shorter ones, they can come forward.
Why am I gonna be tall? You gotta come this way.
Let's try and be just like with arms here.
I can help you all the time.
Thank you.
Great job, everybody. Uh, for, for the library staff, um, I believe Traveling County said uh, we should have an elected official and boards entry next year and that they would participate if you guys set it up. Um, you're perfectly welcome to stay, but we have supplemental budgets left to do and it is a school night. So if you guys want to take a minute, um, you know, it, it won't hurt our feelings if uh, you take off for the night. I was doing 44 years ago? All right, I think we're ready for the next item.
Mayor, the next item is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo. Council Radley. Council Blackwell. Council Doyle.
Aye.
And Council Stapp.
Yes, thank you.
Next item, motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item.
Next item is public hearings. Public hearings number one is the fiscal year 25 supplemental budget number two. This is a resolution adjusting resources and requirements in the following funds. General Street, Special Revenue, Fire, Local Option Levy, Regional Wastewater, Ambulance, Storm Drainage Operations, Booth Kelly and Vehicle and Equipment. Jessica Mummy, um, and Nathan Bell are here for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jessica Mummy. I'm the city's Budget and Procurement Manager, joined this evening by Nathan Bell, the city's Finance Director. At various times during the fiscal year, the council is requested to adjust the annual budget to reflect needed changes in planned activities, to recognize new revenues or to make other required changes. These adjustments to resources and requirements change the current budget and are processed through supplemental budget requests scheduled by the Finance Department. This is the second of three scheduled fiscal year 25 supplemental budget requests to come before council. I just briefly wanted to highlight a couple of the items before you this evening in today's supplemental budget number two package. One of those is our Eugene Springfield Fire Department is receiving $103,000 in revenue for state conflagration revenue. This was received for wildlife conflagration deployment that occurred between July 1st, 2024 and December 31st, 2024. Personnel and apparatus that responded to, this is a long list of wildfires. Darlene, Three, Larch Creek, Lone Rock, Falls, Elk, Town Gulch, Battle Mountain, Dixon, Copperfield and Rail Wit, Rail Ridge wildfires. And also the Springfield Police Department is receiving approximately $115,000 from the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. This grant is used to support a jail-based medications for opioid use disorder program that will be occurring in the Springfield Municipal uh, Jail. With that, I will open it up for any questions.
Actually, um, since we're, if, if people have questions, clarifying questions, let's do those now and then maybe we can come back for the other questions after the public hearing. So I know that people have some general discussion they want to have. So if you want to give me a second so we can open the public hearing and then we, then we can get into it. All right, I'm gonna, does anybody have any clarifying questions about the content? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item.
Uh, no hands for this item, Mayor.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. All right. Michelle?
So I have um, just, I, I guess a desire to have a little bit of context around the um, the item around the uh, Mayor's Task Force. We have two items there that are impacting the We have two items there that are impacting the reserves and just kind of, if we could just get some context around the scope of work. I guess I was a little surprised by the, the dollar amount on those items. So just kind of wanting to make sure we're transparent and just have an understanding of what we're expecting from that.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. So we have actually two separate contracts as part of this supplemental budget process. One of which is for a number of staff members with the firm Funk Levis in Eugene. They have an area of specialty in community engagement with local governments, especially around funding measures and just helping to work through complex issues. That's thing one. So the second contract is with Eco Northwest. Similarly, they are kind of like an economics firm, but they specialize in local government. And part of their role is to do comparative and a lot of comparative analysis. If, when we get to suggestions from the task force, Eco Northwest would be responsible for doing projections, impact statements. They were, they also developed a rating tool for the task force to use to be able to compare proposals or ideas against each other. All of the materials that were created by Funk Levis and Eco Northwest are now on the mayor's website with the minutes. And so you can see that work in the slide deck with those materials. Prior to engaging these firms, we didn't really have a lot of historical information that describes Oregon's tax structure and how Springfield fits it within that tax structure, because every city is a little bit differently. They have different rates that they levy, they have different local option levies, they're different population, different type of assessed value. Given that Oregon as a, as a whole, its larger source of income is property taxes. We thought it was important to show how our city compares with other cities in similar size as much as you can in a real apples and oranges comparison. So partially it is a staffing issue because we're in the process of also simultaneously creating the city's budget. And so that's one side. I don't have the resources within finance to take on a project of this nature. With the Funk Levis group, they are helping with a lot of the materials for the task force. We do a lot of administrative work behind the scenes. So for instance, if a task force member has a question, they help collect that information. We get those answered back to the task force. We're really trying to make sure that, you know, these are people that are volunteering their time, just like you, in addition to your lives and jobs. And in the similar manner that I do with all of you, I try to maximize their time as most, as much as possible. So if there's things that we can do on the administrative side, that's what this is for. So it's, and, and consultants are fairly expensive. In my experience, I, I found these contracts not necessarily a sticker shot for me because I've been doing this for over 20 years. And so I know sort of what the market is for bringing in specialized consultants. And there have been different occasions, not just in this organization, but other organizations where I've looked at, okay, could, could the private sector do this? Function more efficiently or less expensively? It really depends on if it's a highly sought after specialty type of thing. And even private sector firms, they also bring in their overhead costs in addition to the, to the consultant costs. You're never just paying for straight time, much in the same way we do that. So I hope that clarifies.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the, the clarifications and the context.
Been trying to figure out how I can discuss this in a way that gets, I understand what you're talking about. But as a council, when we discussed having a mayor's task force, the costs were not discussed. And I did not know that we were going to be hiring a facilitator who in this three months or whatever, was going to be awarded the amount that I make in an entire year at my full-time job. And then almost that amount to have somebody review the analytics. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I feel misled in developing this task force and I want that to be in the record. So I, I'm not, I'm, I'm really disappointed that this came to us, as you say, as a shock, not knowing that this was going to happen. And if it was, I almost feel like I can't vote to approve the entire supplemental, just because I feel like these two items need to be pulled out and we need to discuss them further. But if it's already started happening, I don't know what we do because we have an assigned contract. But I did check on a couple of other things and I want to clarify that it was explained to me that we are not actually purchasing an EV street sweeper. It's a regular street sweeper, duh, duh. And so that made me feel a little more comfortable about that. And I had the discussion with Brian and kind of understanding that those funds have been set aside in those reserves to purchase that and that we do have a depreciation method that they utilize in replacing equipment. So I'm good with that. And also with the wastewater fund, I talked with Matt and he explained to me some of the costs that were on that. So I'm comfortable with pretty much all of those, but I'm, I'm still really, really uncomfortable with the, with that $70,000 and that $64,000.
Right.
Yeah. I think, I'm not uncomfortable with it. And I think that, that we hire, and by we, I mean Nancy and the team, hire consultants for all sorts of things, all the time. And they come to us and we're like, we hired a consultant to do this special work. If we don't have the capacity for it because we're so lean, I think because of my experience, I assume that if we were going to do a task force and we're going to do it properly, that there's, and I know that we had these conversations about having Marie Levis and having a facilitator and knowing that they were going to be paid to do that and to, to set people up to get us to this end deliverable. So it doesn't at all feel, I have no feelings about it. I feel like this is just the way that we do it and the way that we have done it. And it does not seem like an outlandish amount for the product of what we're trying to get to, to me. So that's just me having different feelings about it, that it just, it, it doesn't feel that different to me than other consultants that we hire for other things, for other deliverables and other projects. And that is definitely within the purview of the city manager to make those decisions. Thanks.
Alan?
Just, just a question. I know this will come up again, so I'd love a little background on it. When we're looking at buying equipments, this is specifically for the street sweeper. I'm curious, this is not just for this, but also in the future, so I have the context. This is a new piece of equipment. I'm just curious, when do we look at you purchasing used equipment as opposed to new equipment? And I say that as a very much a bootstrap small business owner where I'm always really paying attention to the bottom line. And especially if we're facing any kind of budget shortfalls whatsoever, I'm just curious, you know, to talk me through your thought process on only buying the new or when you choose new versus used. Thank you.
Yeah, for this conversation, I'm going to bring up Brian Conlon. I think where we might do this would be in our operations division.
Do you want to grab Brian a seat too? So we don't have to make him stand this time around.
Counselor Stout, I think it's a great question for one. We do purchase used equipment, not with street sweepers. Our experience has been that we've rebuilt our own street sweepers and they are a multifaceted machine with a lot of moving parts, picking up grit and grime that destroys bearings and elevator shafts and those types of things. So they have about a useful life anywhere between three to five years. And we, we anticipate that cost through depreciation and save for that. In this instance, we are moving forward, recognizing that the build time is, it's out there like two to three years on some pieces of equipment. And so we're, we have an opportunity to get one at a very reasonable price with a great return. Actually, they're purchasing our sweeper for $42,000. So anyway, but there, there have been instances where we purchased trailers and even dump trucks in the past use, so.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys' judicious spending of our taxpayers' money. So keep it, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Yeah, and lease, lease also is an option. So we are looking into those things as well. Thank you.
I completely support the idea of trying to make the money go further, but the, the labor on this stuff is a killer, believe me. Especially when we go this way. The city has a fantastic, my voice never, doesn't work up here, by the way. And anyway, the sweeper, I think that's money that's come down through some other source somehow. I think AlCOG meetings came out of there eventually.
You're, I think you're remembering the electric, like the specialized one that was smaller that came out of the MPO. And this is different. This is the normal one.
This is the same one then.
Correct.
Okay, sorry about that.
I'm looking at staff to verify that my memory is correct. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready for the motion.
I move to adopt a resolution adjusting resources and requirements in the following funds. General, street, special revenue, fire, local option levy, regional wastewater, ambulance, storm drainage operations, booth, Kelly and vehicle and equipment.
I will second that.
It's Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Radley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
No.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes.
Motion passes, five yeses, one no. Next item, please.
The next item is business from the audience.
I have one card this evening. It's for JB Carney. Will you state your name and location and organization for the record? And then you have us for three minutes. Hey.
How about that? Perfect. Good evening, Mayor Van Gordon, esteemed council members. My name is JB Carney. I work for Traveling County, based just across the river in Eugene, but representing all of Lane County, including Springfield. Tonight with me, I'd like to introduce a couple of special members in the audience, including Becky Radler from Eugene Marathon, Michael Riley from Tracktown USA, and Samara Phelps from Traveling County. Tonight, we're here to celebrate Springfield and its, and its role in our rich history and legacy around the sports of track and field and running. Springfield is synonymous with names like Bowerman, Dellinger, and Prefontaine. And more contemporary for many of us, Maria Matola and Nick Simmons. When we think of Springfield, we think about the World Athletics Championships, the marathon, and the fast forward to Doris Ranch. We're also here to share a remarkable achievement. In 2024, we earned the destination branding and marketing campaign of the year from Sports Events and Tourism Association. This honor recognizes our efforts in positioning Lane County as a global sports destination. It also is a reflection of our collective dedication. Event organizers, volunteers, participants, and city staff have all contributed to our success. In 2024 alone, track and field and running brought an estimated economic impact of $50 million to our communities. These visitors, athletes, volunteers, and coaches supported local jobs, supported local businesses, and generated additional tax revenue that can be reinvested into our community. Our success is due to the collaboration of the Track and Field Roundtable, a partnership of key organizations, including the Oregon Track Club, Tracktown USA, the University of Oregon, the Eugene Marathon, and Traveling County. Together, we have developed unified branding, engaged our community in new ways, and increased participation at all level. You see, track and field is for everyone. It's not just about the professional and collegiate athletes that visit each summer. Every year, thousands of local youth and adults participate in the sport through partners like Willamane and the Oregon Track Club. These events foster a shared sense of identity and pride. This spring, Eugene Marathon will come right through the heart of downtown Springfield, giving us another opportunity to showcase, showcase this community to the world. So I pose this question to you. As a community member and a leader, how have you participated in the sports of track and field and running? Perhaps it was as a fan, maybe an athlete, or as a volunteer. Your involvement underscores the pride that defines Tracktown. Together, we have built something extraordinary. Let's continue working together to make Springfield a dynamic hub for track and field and running. Thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Thank you. I only had one card. Do we have anybody online that wants to testify? We have one hand up. It's Jason Profit. And Jason, we're, you should be able to unmute your microphone. All right, Jason, try one more time to unmute your microphone. Still muted, Jason. Okay.
Jason Profit into quarry. Hey, we're going to get a street sweeper. I want you to run it down quarry since I'm paying for it. Well, really after tonight, I want to congratulate the city for going on a year of not cleaning up South Fourth Street and Park Street. Guys really stood by your guns on this one, getting all that ice break picked up. And I do want to say thanks to the police department. South Bay has been a lot quieter than it was four years ago. And I actually seen a witness to traffic stop down there Saturday, which, which I think is great. And I think that's all I got to say.
No other hands. Do you have any counsel response? Okay, any, that would be fine.
I just have a quick question. Do I have to do the whole marathon to get to be in Springfield? Because, because I've done the half, but I never get to, it never crosses into Springfield. Okay.
Just start over here in the Victoria.
I just want to say what an, what an amazing event it is. I decided that I was going to do the Eugene Half Marathon in 2018, A, because it was going to be the last time we were going to be at the stadium before they tore it down. And I was 49. I wanted to do it before I turned 50. I got to the 10-mile mark and thought, oh my God, I still have a 5K left. But it was just so fabulous to see so many people in the neighborhoods just rooting you on. And I don't know that I could have made it without those people with their signs and their cowbells and just really made it to where you just didn't quite feel the pain until you got home. But thank you so much for what you do. It's just been a wonderful experience. I'm probably going to do it again this year because my friend who I've done it with and who I did it with passed away over Thanksgiving weekend at the age of 43. And I really want to honor her by doing that because she's done it every year since. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Victoria. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Any business from the city council?
Any other business from the city council? Alan?
Mr. Mayor, you'll permit me one, one brief rhetorical question. Have you looked at the price of eggs lately?
No, I just closed my eyes and pay.
I, I, I understand. And now I was at Albertson's and typically for the last five years, I've had my eyes on the eggs as a father with five children. And for the last five years, with the exception of a blip during COVID, eggs cost $1.99. Now, the average price of eggs for at Albertson's, same exact quality, except that they're cage free. And obviously we were hit by avian flu and a few other things is $5.79 per dozen. Now, I am blessed to be in a position where I, again, like you, I can go ahead and pay. But I am deeply concerned about the price of eggs and that's why I'm wearing this funny hat tonight. It's because I think it's a very important thing. I've had more than a few people say to me, I kids, I guess eggs are just not in the budget this week because we can't afford eggs. And that's people in, in the, in between, you know, in between food stamps and the other, other state programs that we have. So I'm simply taking this moment with this hat as asking council and ourselves what we might be able to do to support. to do to support urban farmers and especially those who are hosting urban chickens. The benefit of urban farming, when done as a community effort, is incalculable, and it builds relationships with our neighbors and friends throughout the year. Most delicious vegetables I ate this entire summer came from my dear neighbors who do amazing things, even with their with the leaves that fall on their on their lawns. So in short, I simply want to draw attention to the food needs of our community and ask what we can do to support a little bit more with local chickens and local farmers, perhaps adding a few more farmers markets. And we may want to reconsider some of our ordinances or simply use this council chamber as a bully pulpit to recognize those who are striving to feed our community in Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I do want to thank last week was City Hall Week in the legislature. So I do want to thank Beth and Corey and Alan and Victoria, who spent all day up at up in Salem lobbying on behalf of our city and talking about the issues that we that we think are important. You guys did a great job. The pictures look great. I heard nothing but good things. And also, so happy that state of the city was done. It was fantastic. I had a great time. But thank you, Elise, for all the help. It couldn't have done it without you. I know you put a lot of work out into it. Next item, please.
Any business from the city manager?
Yes, just a few items. One, thank you to our friends from Traveling County to talk about track and field, a subject near and dear to my heart, that I have gone to a lot of track and field events by nature of the person I am married to, who has a tree in the fast forest. So when we went to visit our tree, we had our dog Scout with us on a leash. Want to put that out? It's Doris Ranch. And Scout shows it showed his appreciation by promptly lifting his leg on my husband's tree in the fast forest. So I wish I could have gotten a picture. Now, we're going to talk a little bit at the council retreat. And it's funny, I think I want I need to rename it because it sounds like y'all are having a spa day and you're not. We're putting you to work on a Saturday. And so one, thank you for volunteering for this other duties as assigned. But this is your opportunity to really get together. And we'll have a little continental breakfast there. We're going to start at nine o'clock in the morning. And we're going to work, we'll give you lunch, but it's going to be a working lunch. And we promise we'll cut it off at one. But it's opportunity for the council to talk as also the council. And then we're going to reconvene and then reconvene as the CETA board to talk about some CETA projects as well. So talking about the priorities that we discussed last year, checking in on those, talking about Mary Bridger is going to do so a little bit of update from the city attorney's office. And then we're also going to talk about, you know, on the CETA section, an update on some of the projects that we have, because, you know, recognizing that some of the things that we're working on have a long planning horizon, and we don't often have a chance to really do that in these work sessions. So Glenwood, obviously, we'll do an update there and some of the properties that are owned by CETA. So I think it will be a productive day, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. And I think this would be a good opportunity for us to really dive into, you know, we about the next step from the task force, right? Because in April, the task force report should be done. It would be a good opportunity for us to start talking as a council. How many times do we want to see it, the report and talk about it in the spring? And then how many? And how many? What is our public engagement strategy going to start to look like as we go into the fall? Does anybody else have any other questions? And I'm going to add one more topic. Would you please make sure we come back to the stipend, the reimbursement conversation? That's been something that has been on and off a couple a couple of times during the year.
We can do that, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Any business from the city attorney?
No business. We I'm back to the retreat and planning on talking about your operating policies and including a conversation about reimbursements then. So we'll be there. No other business. Thank you.
All right, that is it for the evening. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.